County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is welcome during the public communication section of each meeting and during any scheduled public hearings, like the ones we just had. I guess we will start with introductions. How about we start over to my left?
Hi, I'm Eric Casino. I serve at large and I live in the Lacey UGA.
I'm Sandy Kaiser. I live in and serve District Three.
I'm Daniel Baumbacher. I live in and serve District One.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Barry Halberson, I live in and serve District Two.
Alan Bertlet, I live in Tumwater. I serve District Five.
And Joel Hansen, I serve District Three. Do we have any commissioners online right now?
Commissioner Pesenger.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Pesenger.
Kevin Pesenger, District Five.
Perfect, okay. And we're expecting Mr. Fishburne to join us shortly via the Zoom option. Let's see, we have an agenda in front of us. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Summons.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Here we have an agenda. Next on our agenda is public communication. And I have a little script that I read. And I will read it as Lynn Fitzhugh is. Oh, is that my? Did I skip right over it?
To the agenda. To public.
Oh, I did, sorry. I need new glasses. I really do. I guess we have some minutes to approve from the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Do we have any discussion on those minutes?
My motion to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record for April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific, okay. Thank you. You can read my eyes tonight. So first, to give public comments tonight is Lynn Fitzhugh. And I will just read our little script here. The Thurston County Planning Commission welcomes comments from the public at all meetings. The general speaking guidelines are please introduce yourself, including the address you reside at in the county. Please address the Planning Commission, not the audience or staff. The Planning Commission may not respond to public comments. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes. The timer will show on one of the video screens to help you keep track of time. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature, please. No comments that are commercial in nature. All materials provided to the county may be subject to release pursuant to the Public Records Act. Remarks on projects that have already had a Planning Commission public hearing will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. Thank you for your cooperation and.
Chair, I just noticed Bill's on there as a attendee.
Oh.
I don't know if, oh, can you remove him over?
Moving him over, okay. Terrific. Lynn, would you like to?
Sure.
Start, thank you.
And Chair, this Norton would also like to testify that I stole the sign and chief.
Perfect. I will make sure everybody has the opportunity.
Lynn Fitzhugh, I live southeast in Olympia. My comments are unfortunately quite redundant of what I've said before. I appreciate that you, staff and staff responded by adjusting the verbs. But that wasn't really what I was asking for. And I think a number of them were saying they needed the items to be actionable. So, you know, the verbs don't really change whether it's actionable. And what we really wanted was for the actual items in the climate management plan to be. And, you know, you can make a sentence that just says we append, you know, we're moving it in and we append it. And that would cut it. I think it's important because one thing that was commented on last time and seems to not be being understood is when the plan was created, the consulting was very clear, to be successful at its goal. It was totalling. It was not an alibi. It was not a. So, if you're serious about that actually passed, it needs to go all of it over there. I realized that you all are volunteers. And we have no items besides climate change things to look at. I don't expect you guys to do some kind of change at first. I understood why people felt overwhelmed at the last meeting. There's seventy-two items, how do we process this? But you don't have to create priorities among those items. They need to all, you know, go to the staff. That is what the staff needs to do in terms of creating priorities and also figuring out, you know, how they will implement these things. I need to also say that the discussion that took place last time about the changing light bulbs was honestly one of the most depressing things I've looked into in a while. It is not a saving money account. Like, yes, that can happen as a result of changing the light bulb. But the point is to reduce. Why it's missing. To reduce emissions. And, you know, people speculated about why is it not already happening? Is there a stock of old light bulbs they're trying to use up? Or are they just not replacing ones until they run out? Either way, like if you look it up, you will see, just Google it, you will see it takes between six months and two years for it to pay for itself, meaning that the savings in energy that you started to have pays for the cost of the new light bulb. That's the cost part. That's, you know, like, okay, good, it pays for itself. The important thing is it's reducing emissions. That's why it's in the plan. So, you know, there's some unfortunate jokes we could make about how many county officials to change the rules or not funding the grant money. Let's please, you know, have the staff start to figure out how they want to go about doing it. You know, and it's not, I have to say, just light bulbs. Like, if you look at that item, it actually also says that all of the streetlights in the county are supposed to be converted to LED. Oh, yes, it probably was expensive to do it. Good thing it will pay for it. And at this point, five years in, we could have already saving us money if we'd done it back when the plan was.
Thank you. Next on the list is Marilyn and Paul. Oh, they said they don't want to give comments, so it's fine. Charlotte Persons.
They can't talk about things that go around a public hearing.
Charlotte Persons, I live on Glass Avenue.
They can.
Can you hear me, by the way?
I can, it's difficult.
Any mics or anything?
Yeah.
I don't have a really.
They're on the ceiling.
There, okay.
We can't.
So, my question is, all this talk about light bulbs, I think that's important because it is one of the actions on the Thurston Climate Migration Plan. The point is, we're five years in, there's seventy-two items on that plan. The county agreed to implement it. Only two items have actually been taken at all, okay? And so, as a citizen, it seems to me that there's foot dragging, okay? And there's no, that's, you're not serious about this. You don't see it, as many of us do, as the legacy that you're leaving the earth and your grandchildren. Whether or not we start cutting emissions is going to make a big difference. And it can only be county by county, state by state, country by country. And you can do your part. And by not implementing these actions, you're saying, we sign this piece of paper, it means nothing. And I hate to think that that's really what you believe. So, I think that you need to be serious about working with the commissioners and with staff, on staff identifying actions that should be taken, creating a way to get them onto the county work plan and getting them done. And then we'll believe that you think this is serious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in the audience like to give a comment? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betsy Martin. I live in Olympia. I just wanted to briefly say we submitted some written comments. Black Hills Automotive did, and I support all of those. I'd also like to bring your attention, since you're talking about RRI, to the future wise comments on RRI. You got them there? Because they're saying that warehousing is basically in urban use, so you can't put it in a rural area or the GMA. So, please take account of that. And I'd like to say also, after being at the Black Lake Resources Open House and also talking to Miss Wally Wildlife Refuge, one of the US Fish and Wildlife people there, I just want to say they're very, very close to a really precious wildlife habitat. And, you know, it's really important that we be, when you're zoning for RRI anywhere in the rural areas, you take into account water demand, water resources, you know, what's going to happen with all the stormwater, whether there are barriers, take into account climate change with the possible rise of groundwater, all kinds of stuff. Because over there, you have, the neighbors were talking about the deer and the bear and the salmon. There's a coho run that's on the corner of that thing. And this is an Oregon spotted frog designated critical habitat. So, any of those RRI spots that you have, I think there are a number of them that have those same kind of constraints nearby. And so, when you're zoning for that, please be aware of that and make bigger buffers, take more account of preserving them against water pollution, in particular, and air pollution. And think about the kind of uses that you really want to have in that environment so that the wildlife and habitat is protected. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we will shift to the attendees online for comment now. I see Phyllis Farrell has her hand up, so we'll start with Phyllis.
Okay, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Phyllis Farrell. I live in the Sunwood Lakes neighborhood of unincorporated Thurston County. And thank you all for your work and service. I'm amazed at the time and the effort that's involved in your volunteer activities. And I want you to know it is really appreciated. I focus on just a couple of things and I'm overwhelmed, so I really tip my hats to all that you do. I'd like to comment tonight about the options for building sizes for the RRI zone. The staff analysis gave a couple of options. I previously testified, well, I submitted some comments as well, written comments. But I previously testified that warehouses in the rural areas should be limited to natural resource activities such as agriculture-related businesses and forestry. From the staff analysis, I like option two. By the way, I'm speaking as an individual tonight. But I suggest option two, the limiting building sizes based on percentage of a lot size, similar to what has been adopted in Skagit County. I think most aligns with Thurston County values. But I do want to point out, and I think Betsy did this earlier, on page nine of the future wise comments, and I'm going to quote from it. Warehouses and other non-resource-based industrial uses qualify as urban growth because they cover most or even all of a lot with large buildings and impervious surfaces such as paving. Therefore, they are, quote, incompatible with the primary use of land for the production of food, other agricultural products or fiber, or the extraction of mineral resources, rural uses, rural development, and natural resources lands, end quote. There's simply not enough open land left to farm where warehouses are constructed. So warehouses and other non-resource-based industrial uses qualify as urban growth and are prohibited in rural areas. Consequently, proposed policies, land use one point eight point eleven and one point eight point twelve are illegal and cannot be adopted. So, I think the distinction there is warehouses versus buildings. I think agriculture-related businesses and buildings would be okay in the rural area, but big warehouses, I think, should be prohibited. But option two is my preference there. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Is anyone else wishing to give a comment online? I see another hand from Kristi White. Kristi, we will get you up here as a panelist and fire away.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me all right?
Loud and clear.
Great. I just wanted to echo Phyllis too in appreciation of all the hard work you're doing. Oh, sorry, I forgot. I live in the Delphi Valley of Thurston County. Again, just to say thank you, the 2045 plan is massive. And there's a lot of detail in there that's going to need to roll out and really appreciate all the work that you're doing. I also hope too, as the years go on here, and if you do decide to have anything come back to you from the Commissioners and stakeholder input is engaged, that there will be that opportunity in a very effective manner to help guide the policies for the county coming into the future. I believe there's going to still continue to be pressure for large warehouse, massive warehouses in this county. Greys Harbor recently announced the Amazon warehouse that is going in there. And I suspect that part of that was all the hard work that we've done to try and discourage them. I know there's pros and cons for that from an economic standpoint. But I think the non-economic points are much more valuable than what small revenue would come to the county from large warehouses. So again, my thanks to you guys and appreciation for the extraordinary job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Would anyone else on the Zoom like to give comments tonight? I'm not seeing any more hands raised, so I think we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is work session number thirty-three on the Thurston twenty forty.
Hi, good evening. I'm Amelia Schwartz. I'm an associate planner with Thurston County. We are going to be going over some of the comments received during the written comment period. All right, today's work session, we'll have just a short presentation to go over the comment themes, summary. And then the rest of the meeting, we will be working through the changes based on comments specifically, starting with the climate crosswalk with the TCAT comments that they added in that column. That's very helpful. We can go through them one by one. We definitely don't expect to get through everything tonight. So this will go on for the next four meetings. So, get excited. A quick comment summary. So, for the PC public comment period, obviously, there's been public comment period since about twenty twenty-two now. Y'all remember. But for this section of the comment period, there were eighty-plus comments. There was a broad consensus on support for environmental protection, protection of water resources, urgent climate action, and affordable housing. Where we had some divergence in opinions was largely on the growth policies and the ground mound scenarios. So I'll give you a second to digest the pie chart. For the other categories, that includes transportation, utilities, and public health. So, that distribution highlights growth management, environmental stewardship, climate action, and housing affordability as the dominant public concerns. All right.
I need to rip you, Amelia. I'm curious about how you decided to label the comments because they overlap so much, these topics and.
Yeah, so for some, if they submitted through the survey, they were able to select which chapter. So that made that simpler. And then others, if they submitted something that wasn't through the survey, then probably staff had to piece it together, yeah. I wasn't part of the staff who did that, so I'm not exactly sure, but that's how we've done it in the past.
I think that was mostly Maya who went through those, and she is out looking.
Go ahead.
Commissioner.
Thank you. On the slide titled Comment Summary, chapters at the top left under land use, the support for five percent rural growth, urgency to do it now. I heard a lot of comments about that. But would it be fair to say that it was more like, not just support for five percent rural growth, but we don't think we're going to get there the way we're currently going? And we need to take some dramatic changes in order to hit five percent instead of fourteen percent?
So, yeah, there, right now, we have in the, in the comp plan drafts, the target really is that five percent rural growth. When you do the analysis on available land, there is more than five percent of the growth in available land in the county. And that's the dilemma there. And there are questions on whether it's a, you know, is that a big drastic approach? Or are there other ways to get towards the five percent? So that, I think you're understanding it correctly, Commissioner Pesenger. There were, there were comments about that difference between available land and the goals that we're setting out.
Thank you.
All right, so we had some comments from management and other folks wanting to see where a lot of the survey responses were coming from. So I took a little bit of time this afternoon. So, any questions on methodology, I can at least answer for this one. And I'll flip back and forth. So this shows for the comments, and I don't have the comment period, but obviously, it was more than just the eighty from the past comment period. So it's a longer term of where the comments are coming from within Thurston County. And so I've separated this by zip code, which is where respondents were able to put in their zip code. We weren't tracking them, it was optional, they could type it in. Type it in. And so you can see the largest majority is coming from the Olympia-Tumwater central area along the dischutes. Yes, I could give you that for a second. And then go back. So, and then also, in case there were questions about what if there are comments coming from outside the county, there are a couple, not many. There were three from King County, one from Pierce County, and one, or two from Mason County. Then the rest were Thurston County zip codes. But yeah, the largest majorities are in the ninety-five oh one and ninety-five oh two.
And just for the record here, we thought about this early on today, and then Amelia was able to pull all this together, including that on that heat map that we just saw this afternoon. It's too many.
Yeah, so if the legend isn't up to your standards, I am sorry, but next time I'll do it better. So, yeah, if that helps contextualize some of the comments. So the comment summary, you know, Commissioner Pesenger touched on this. So, for land use, there was the support for five percent rural growth, an urgency to do it now. And of course, this is a very high-level general summary. This will not be inclusive of every single comment, so please do not take it that way. Flexibility on future UGA changes, rural resource industrial support and additional requests. For natural resource lands, there was the protection of farmland, questions on mineral land designation, aquaculture section needing updates, and support for walkability. Housing had addressed climate in the housing chapter. Clarity on the housing chapter, especially with affordable versus low-income housing. And then the climate chapter, common summaries included more urgency in the climate actions, accelerating the implementation timeline, prioritizing greenhouse gas reduction in the transportation section. And then kind of tying into the transportation element, planning for e-bikes, encouraging walkability, updates to PSE content in the utilities chapter, considering impacts to state facilities. And then for the environment, recreation, and open space chapter, there were comments largely over water conservation and water rights, water banking, water metering, and suggestions to further support wildlife connectivity. So these are just major themes, highly, highly summarized. Definitely encourage you to read the larger comments at large if you have not already. So then.
I have a clarifying question?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
On the third bullet under land use, when it's zero dash support and additional requests, what does the word support mean in that context? Support for what?
So, I believe that that's referring to, there was some comments in support of the way that we are adjusting the rural resource industrial language. So that is, we, if we all recall, the changes that we made to ensure that those rural resource industrial developments were specifically tied to resource industries. And then I think it was also, it did provide some clarity for, I think, some landowners. So, that I think.
Was this also where the option one, two, and three came up?
For the size of the.
Building potentially limiting the size, yeah.
That was mostly at your all's request. To look at some different options for restricting size in those zones.
Okay, I guess I just saw a lot of public comments in writing that said, I support option one, or I support option two. And I heard a couple of people today say they support option two. Is that all the same thing, or are there different option ones and twos out there?
No, I think that refers, those are the same options, so I think you had that right.
Okay, and do you have any summary so far on what the majority of support is for relative to options one, two, and three? To me, it sounds like option two. Love to know the numbers.
Not if I come up to individual chapter reviews.
I think we might be able to dig into that. Like, I think Amelia's exactly right. We could dig into that at the individual chapter reviews. I do not have that offhand.
Okay, thank you.
So, for regulations, the large overarching centered around delaying or removing cluster density bonuses due to some lot size concerns, concerns over cluster development in general, rural detached ADUs, some comments calling to reject it. There was support for climate, EV adaptability and military compatibility changes. For ground mound housing, there was support on both sides of the options. And there were suggestions for future code changes, in which there will be some pathways in the critical areas update in twenty twenty-six. So there are some concerns over the detached ADUs that are contrary to sustainable Thurston. So that's something, when you do get to that in the later meetings, to look over both what's sustainable Thurston, as I said, versus what comments are saying. So that is one of the awesome things we get to do as planners, is we get to hear opposite opinions. So, a lot of mixed, mixed things. It's set for largely support for climate. Lot of mixed, mixed things, except for largely support for climate movement. It's a good thing we're talking about that tonight, um, good news, everyone. So today we're starting on going through the crosswalk, working through that. Um, in addition, like, it was wonderful that Paris from T C A T sent over the crosswalk with their added column of notes, that made it so, so like direct and easy to go through theirs. Um, and I also have some uh, mentions and ideas from Rebecca Harvey, our senior climate program manager, I think I've mixed up the order of some of those, um. But, cause she's, she's really the head of what we actually do with climate in the county, so she had some thoughts as well. So we'll spend probably a large amount of our time tonight on that. Then for the next four meetings, we will attempt to approach the chapters sequentially where we can dive into those those big broad comment summaries we had today, we can actually delve into them and we'll have presentations for everything. So. I know you guys are like so excited, it's, it is really big stuff and like, we actually have really workable tangible things, that's awesome. Um, so we're hoping to get an overall recommendation by June eighteen, so we've got some time to to get through the meat of these. Um, and then the individual changes over the next four meetings can be recorded as findings in the final planning commission recommendation. Alright, and then as usual, waste engage, visiting the Thurston twenty forty five webpage, signing up for email updates. And comments, this is where it gets a little sticky, uh, Derek, you wanna explain how we're running comments?
Yeah, and I think, um, Joel, you, we touched on it a little bit earlier when we were talking about kind of what kind of public comments we'd be taking tonight. Um, so the procedural record essentially closes for the public hearings. Um, we can take and hear and listen to all the comments that people wanna make at any point in time. There's a question about whether those will hit the right procedural points to make it into like a certain set of the step of the process, so like, for example, comments tonight that were reiterative of things that we heard during those public hearings, we'll work to make sure that like if the, if we heard new things, that will translate those over into uh, conversations with the board, but the input that we can take now for this part of the process um, is is more limited, so.
Thank you. Um, it's just me, so just Amelia shorts, um, Maya's out and it's not here tonight, but they will absolutely be back with y'all. I'm gonna stop sharing, so that way my computer doesn't die halfway through this. But yeah, I'm ready to get started on the crosswalk, what do you guys?
Who has questions or comments? Let's go first.
I haven't seen it till now.
We're talking about the crosswalk, are we talking about the thing that we received before the public hearing last time or the documents received in the last hour?
Ones that we received in the last hour were also part of our practice.
Yeah, so the additions from T C A T were sent, I think, the day before the first hearing, so you should have already had them.
Consolidated version?
Yeah. So if you see my um, storybook size version of this over here, um, I went ahead and printed it big, so that way I've got T C A T's notes right here.
Okay.
We're looking specifically.
I asked for them to be recent mostly because I wanted to highlight them, um, and also like um, to be honest, they got, they got buried within the the idle wave of documentation that we had, so. I just wanted to make sure that we have them. But we have them.
And the most recent version with the column including the T C A T notes is in the packet of available site.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
So we're looking at C C one oh seven dated the twenty third of April. So there's been no changes and nothing additional since the twenty third of April?
Not that we've gotten from T C A T, so we are referring to the pre-hearing notes that they sent over to us.
So, because this, this looks different than the stuff we received in the last hour. It had timeline changes and it had um, the additional items that weren't in the forty two. That, that doesn't match up with the C C one oh seven.
Yeah.
The last hour. I believe it may have been emailed to you days previously, but.
That's why I was asking, because I hadn't seen this.
Yeah, the stuff we received in the email was new.
I wanted to make sure that we had the most up to date copy, which is why I was. I'm glad, I'm glad now that I did.
That's different from what I have and have the market.
Okay, it includes the thirty some items that this is the one that we got in the forty two that we've been discussing in the crosswalk.
And Barry, you, yeah, this is.
This is on my phone, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the records notes in here.
No, this is just.
No, they are in here.
Yeah.
I, I wonder, um, anyone on staff could print those attachments, um.
You got like ten copies, because that's like nine.
Sasha did just leave.
No, I'm specifically the documents they sent are roughly twenty pages. Practically, if we wanted to tackle it, we need to have it in front of us.
Yeah, if we just wanted to focus on the implementation timelines, that would be about twenty pages.
Well, we already have this. It's just the new stuff, that's what I'm.
Okay, so what I'm working off of is in that email that Paris McCloskey sent was the the P D F called T C A T comments of Thurston County P C climate crosswalk dot doc X dot P D F. So that's what I.
Okay, we're looking at a comp, I think what uh, special burn burgers are referring to is the uh, climate change. Am I correct on that?
It's, it's, it's called a T C A T feedback on climate chapter of the cop plan implementation plan and climate crosswalk. There are four attachments.
Yeah, so we're just working on that, that first P D F. That's just for the crosswalk, it should be about seven hundred fifty eight kilobytes. Because we still will come back to climate later, tonight's just on the crosswalk for, for right now. For right now, right now, don't worry, we'll have time to get to that. Sorry, I've already put it into the waffle box of my, my imagination of.
That probably makes sense.
Yeah, like.
So do we just wanna start on the crosswalk from the top then, is that the idea? Just go page by page.
Okay. Um, did we wanna, okay, nevermind. Uh, that's probably the most systematic way to do it, I was gonna ask for one to highlight the two issues that like had been brought up, re- reiterated at this comment. But Derek can go to the top anyways.
Yeah, so if we wanna start with one, which is B one point one. Everybody there? Alright, so T C A T's comments were at a due date for adoption of a home energy performance disclosure ordinance. They suggested a date of December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Um, and they wanted to add to I P C L twenty seven. Um, track estimated energy and greenhouse gas emissions reduction and savings to consumers. And then our climate, for some reason, didn't print Rebecca's comment on this first page for me, what was Rebecca's comment? Okay, so Rebecca Harvey, our climate senior program manager, said, sounds good, but she would actually push the due date. Um, to December twenty twenty six.
That was gonna be my question, um, was that like, given when this is.
It's gonna need to pass until.
Yeah, when this gets adopted, it makes sense for that to be twenty twenty six, but like, there's no date right now, so anything's better than than what we've got.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, it'd take time too.
Should we just temperature check these then?
So that's, I mean, totally up to you guys, but what I think my personal opinion would be, both or each one, you guys give me a majority thumbs up or thumbs down, based on what we suggest, I'm keep moving.
I love that.
I think that's efficient.
Well, then, then I could start being the contrarian to the group here, if that's okay.
Yeah.
When, when we start with these, with B one one and move through B one six, there's a lot of stuff in here that are use words like require. And first of all, in policy documents, that makes me a little bit iffy, but more importantly when we're talking about new development, requiring energy standards on new development. I think it's a conversation to have separately, then requiring energies, first, first it's energy audits. Then it's energy standards, and by the time we get to B one six, that it, the language is, you know, meet a baseline. On existing properties, that is going to add a lot of cost. And it's going to add, especially for rental units, if all of a sudden landlords have to have energy audits, and then they have to meet a baseline of energy standards. And th- these are probably going to affect the lowest quintile of people in our community. And it's going to raise the cost of housing on the people that can least afford it. And this is especially true on existing development, new development is a whole nother conversation. On an existing development, if all of a sudden we have some eight hundred dollar apartments that first have to have energy audits and then have to meet baseline energy standards and those become thousand dollar apartments. I'm not sure that the people that are renting those are really gonna feel good about how they're doing their part to save the environment when they can't pay their rent. I think that's something that we need to convince. I'm sorry?
It's at the time of sale, the energy audits are at the time of sale.
Yeah, so they're, they're.
Well, there's one here for rental, it says right in there for. So re- require rental units to meet baseline levels of energy and make more stringent overtime. Or uh, homes at time of sale, lease or rent. So these are things that are gonna happen in some of the you know, if, if somebody's renting a nineteen sixty eight single wide mobile home for eight hundred dollars a month, and all of a sudden the landlord's gotta do an energy audit, or has gotta do a whole bunch of upgrades to it. It's not gonna be eight hundred dollar single wide mobile home anymore. So we're gonna, if we're gonna work on this kind of stuff, we really have, I mean, I've said this before, that I still think the most important species in the county is the humans. This will impact the humans way more than it's gonna save any other species in the county.
Do kind of need those other species in order to be humans in the county, um, I will say that, uh, in terms of these, the requirements that I'm seeing where, where, where it's mentioning rentals specifically. Um, include limits on sales prices and renting expenses in these properties associated with these improvements is specifically mentioned in there. Um, it also, in other contexts where it doesn't have that, tha- that's in B one point five. Uh, that I see that, that language specifically, I was just like scrolling through and trying to find where rentals were mentioned. Um. Uh, and yeah, it's in one point four two. Um, that, yeah, those, those limits are specifically mentioned, because the, like, that's a concern, I agree, um. But, uh, it's also like here, I just closed, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I, I agree that we need to take uh, affordability into account, we should be taking affordability into account in multiple areas. But like, this isn't the area where affordability is mentioned, even like, it is primarily focused on, this is primarily focused on the climate change aspect. Um, I'm really glad they mentioned it, that was important, um. But that's separate from this implementation, that's where we're talking about housing prices overall, that's where we're talking about affordability in other contexts.
Sure, Hubler.
Um, I would like to take the opportunity, um, to, to encourage that we, uh, for this to be productive, we should stick to a structure, a broad conversation on all of the parts of B one isn't going to get us to uh, edits that make sense and where we have differences of opinion, it might be best to provide that as we go through the line. Um, we had just read B one dot one, we had received staff feedback on the tweak we'd need to make it implementable, I feel like the appropriate action would be to do our check in on that specific line item, move to the next, and as we just, when we have disagreements about specific sections on them. Uh, s- keep them to that, come to a decision or a temperature check, if it needs more work. And move forward so we can actually get through these, instead of broadly supporting or not supporting chunks of this, let's focus on what we can implement, or we do have agreement on, and then revisit the things that maybe broadly we don't, we disagree on.
I, I would be afraid that parsimony would kill the holistic message that's being made in these. And if holistically, uh, there is a lot of language in here that says require and I guess my biggest problem here is, there's a whole lot more opportunity for sticks in this than there is carrots, there are some opportunities for carrot, of course. There's a lot of stick in here, and the stick is what scares me the most.
Uh, if I could respond, I, I think that when we get to these items where we disagree on require. Maybe we can achieve the same thing with an incentive, or maybe we can uh, use a term where it, it's not practical for us to require something, because we have no enforcement mechanism or no financial tool to do that. Uh, put explorer or partner, I mean, their original language was written for the entire county, a lot of it, as I read it really does feel like it has the, the cities in mind, and we can adapt them to make them make sense in the county, but we can't do that broadly, we need to go through them line by line. If we, we want to get through this, I really feel like we should just go line by line, and when we have disagreements on those words, we should discuss them. Temperature checks, so staff can make productive changes to them. For this meeting, we'll never reach an endpoint and we won't come to a productive use on them. So I, I would suggest to the chair that we temperature check based on the feedback we got for B one dot one and move to number two.
How do we feel about that?
I don't like the word require, uh, that on notes, uh, expense. Something that the county can't afford, this primarily is going to you know, your uh, real estate agents and the documents that they have to prepare for disclosures, et cetera. And changing all those documents, um, which may be a good thing, and they may do it with a little bit of emphasis from us, other than saying required. I don't like the word required when we're talking about policies. Uh, I like the word required when we're talking about codes or enforcement, that's not what we're talking about here.
If, if I might, um, the suggestions from T C A T for B one dot one are to add a due date and to uh, track estimated energy greenhouse. I understand that the original item is required, but that is not what they're asking, they're asking for those two changes. Which staff believe are implementable with a tweak to twenty twenty six, so all we'd be checking in on is that, right?
Could I add a point of information?
Please.
So that column where we are seeing require right now, that's, that's uh, the T C M P, that's not the climate.
Yeah.
Elements language, yes, like, so yeah, yeah, I know, I, when I made the Excel sheet, it was supposed to have it pop up on every page. But now that has gone through multiple people's, yeah, so that's where it says require energy performance ratings.
That makes sense, thank you.
We're, we're just looking at this, just this.
I, I've been talking about this like we were just looking at that corner, I forgot.
I thought we were, that was not clear.
I was reading everything, Roger.
Well, good. Talking about the second column and
Making the changes.
Fourth column is, is.
Yeah, and you always have the option to be like, hey, team, do we wanna just pull in that exact language or add it, like you, you have free will, um, as much as we all do, but okay, yeah, so that, that second column is T C, sorry, is T C M P.
Okay, I, I look at it from the standpoint of, I look at that last column, right? And I see add a due date for adoption of a home energy performance disclosure ordinance, we suggest a date of, et cetera, so all I see they're doing with that comment is adding that date to the first column.
Adding to the, this one.
Second column is, is the cop plan.
That's I P C L fourteen.
So it would look like by December twenty twenty.
Twenty six, yes, what they're suggesting is this, this right here. This, move into here, because this is our existing language, this is their, their item, this is not.
Specifically like you were saying, I P L C or I P C L fourteen, so it's the, the second item on there.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I know you get that, I'm just making it clear for everybody.
I'm glad.
Decided that we are going to adopt a home energy performance disclosure ordinance. Did the board decide we're doing that? When they adopted the T C M P S.
Yeah.
We've accepted. Adopted it?
Is, is it on any docket to uh, to generate this? This new ordinance?
I'm working on it for the last year and.
This is on the, this is a cop plan, this is currently in the cop plan, so that's where it comes from.
The. Yeah.
So the I P C L fourteen.
Yeah.
Is, if you see. Is, if you see that in, at least from mine, it's my third column. So it's collaborate with the T C M C to develop and adopt a home energy performance disclosure ordinance that would implement. So right now that is draft language in the I P.
And a regional policy to require home energy assessment, so even
Yeah.
even in the comprehensive planning policies from the county, it uses the require.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That's in the current draft.
Yeah.
But it's saying to develop and adopt, so it would still need to be developed, how, you know, cuz it could say require when feasible and, you know, with all these stipulations. Um but yeah, so it's it's not that direct, direct language where it's like, it's already done, it's saying develop at first.
And this is applicable residential real estate for sale, so there's
And that assessment.
Maybe, maybe applicable, you have the option to say what's in, what's out.
Exactly.
That assessment could take a range of different, that could look a lot of different places. Could be like a what is the age of the home and a like attestation that is like, which of these things have you upgraded, have you insulated, have you put new windows in?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the development of that home energy performance disclosure ordinance would be qualifications, I guess.
You know, another concern I have here is, I think that the work that TCAT does is very important and is is good for informing all of these kind of decisions. That being said, an outs, a collaboration of an outside group with developing county code, no matter who that outside group is, if it was Habitat for Humanity, if it was the Shellfish Growers Association, it was the mining industry, if it was any kind of in outside group that is going to collaborate on making code and ordinance. I'm not super comfortable with that. I think that they should have the right to uh say whatever they want to say to the government, they have the right to um forward any other public comment like everybody else is. But for them to be the one and only other outfit at the table while developing ordinance and specifically called out in the comp plan to do so. Um I I wouldn't want any, any industry to have that kind of access.
I think there's a couple of different acronyms, so TCAT, Thurston Climate Action Team is the nonprofit entity. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative um is the group that's, that is um the staff of um Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater and Thurston County. So it's the collaborative and, I don't know, maybe they spent too much time on naming everything, but uh but that is staff and it's also um representatives, elected officials of each of those jurisdictions.
This is a pretty broad, like, uh and very publicly uh documented. Collaboration, this isn't a uh behind closed doors, a specialist meeting.
Okay, I'll take your word for it and accept that as the way it is.
I I would also um share that a lot of the feedback we've received is climate focused. And a lot of people not directly um involved with TCAT have echoed support for TCAT's comments. So this is different than us considering the shellfish thing. If we had dozens or hundreds of comments saying you should look at the shellfish association stuff, we should do that. And we're not saying, oh, only TCAT gave this to us, so let's look at TCAT's things. We've heard from the public way outside of TCAT that they're supportive of that, and so we are actually incorporating broad feedback that has used this as a vehicle, but is not explicitly just their opinions being represented.
Do we have a temperature check?
On B one dot one?
Or adding a due date.
Adding a due date on I P C L.
I think, you know, looking at this as a comp plan thing, I'm not comfortable putting a date certain on it. Cuz we have no idea what the commissioners are gonna be up against in six months, much less two years. Um I think, and I think that's a decision for the commissioners, not us. Um cuz I think that's just like, you know, and we can't change, if we change, if the commissioners change this and it has to be done by twenty twenty six, guess what? If depending on when it gets done, we can't change the date until after it's too late. If we don't get there, because we can only do the comp plan once a year. And putting anything for the county to finish a year out from when they're adopting it, I can tell you, is not a good idea. I've, I don't think I've ever seen anything get done quick at Thurston County.
No liability is created.
So.
If you have a date in your comp plan and then you don't hit it.
Far as I know, I think we could be held accountable for that, I'm not sure what recourse would be.
Yeah.
To what degree, so you you like, wha- wha- what we heard was that we, that the uh December thirty first of twenty twenty six was uh achievable.
That, so I wanna be really clear, so.
In theory.
We had.
Right, I wanna hear what that.
We had our, our, basically, we have a countywide specialist whose job it is to think about climate. She is not involved in like work planning, but when I look at this, I'm thinking, okay, that would probably be um at least, like Rebecca would probably coordinate that. We would need to find staff that we can pull in who can write codes and ordinances. Do we have those people at this point? Um I will say to Scott's point, I know this is gonna not be a satisfactory answer for a lot of people. Um do by twenty twenty, like twenty twenty six, that's like tomorrow in bureaucrat years. Like that's lightning speed and we're on B one point one.
We, we, I'm sorry, we, I'm we gotta, so this question more.
Um question, um I agree that a the actual passing of an ordinance is relying on the Board of County Commissioners. Um but the stuff, part that staff does and the collaborative does is the development. Um what are folks' feelings about putting the twenty twenty six, the December thirty one, twenty twenty six deadline on the development? So even if it has not been adopted, which is factors we cannot control, the factors we can control, which are the development, happened by twenty twenty six. That alleviates the liability, but it also puts a fire to staff to get that work done.
Yeah, I would, I don't think it will alleviate liability.
The language that.
The language is still there, so if the county doesn't do it.
I, but it's, it's less of, it's less of um an issue of how politically feasible. If they develop it and it doesn't pass then, or it's just available and it hasn't been docketed yet. Yeah, I I feel like that that is at least more reasonable.
And I'm also thinking about whether the res, the, so where the resources are right now, so within the Climate Mitigation Collaborative, um I'm not sure that the way the county is represented on there right now, we would have the expertise to develop codes and ordinances. Yeah, I.
I think from a technical standpoint too, this would be us dictating the docket and the work plan. That's not our job.
Essentially, eventually it would come back and it would be the board dictating by adopting this, so.
Yeah, we're just, we're just providing suggestions here.
If it's in the comp plan, it's more than a suggestion, but.
Well, but we're not writing the, like, we're, we're suggesting what goes in the comp plan, you know, that's what I'm saying, like, we can add that in there.
The thing I think we could be responsible for as a county is to do something to like say um convene, solicit a recommendation. By that date, um I think that, given our ability to control a collaborative, I think that's a fair thing to put on the county.
Okay.
Um and then we, then the the board has to pick up the, that ordinance. So and then we, I mean, you could have something about also and consider an ordinance once drafted or something like that, I I think my, my, my main point is we're at B B one point one and there is like a hundred F T Es worth working in here.
So I, I feel like we've discussed this there, for this first bullet, there are three options here. One is, as written, require the ordinance, there is the make the deadline on the, not on the adoption, but development, and then you're further softened, like convene. So could we just temperature check the three options where we're at?
Or none, right?
Or none, yeah.
How do you feel about the, are are, are you feeling that there's kind of some distinct paths to go down as staff?
We could call path A being um adding a, you know, exactly what they say in that, add a due date for adoption of an H E P D O by December, and then we'd edit it to twenty twenty six, so that's path A of their language of a twenty twenty six. Maybe path B could add this, but say a due date for development of a H E P D O, and that, if if I'm understanding things correctly, that way, you know, we still have time, it's developed, and then we still have time to adopt it, cuz like, uh Commissioner Nelson was saying, we don't know it's gonna be happening, and that way, there's still more public process time for the board, that's an option. Path C, saying no to everything, path D is up to you.
I, well.
And the more I think about this, the, like, I think this this is gonna be an issue with the with the entire, the entirety of this, is the, like, how much can we control, what are the barriers? How much capacity do we have? Like, where is, where is the sticking point? Is, in my mind, like, I've been bureaucratting for a minute, and that's usually the thing that you really wanna put a spotlight on, like, what's holding this up? Um because this is, this is a, this is a really substantial body of work, you know? Um and looking at how much is in here, I, I think that might be another way to think about this is um is having doing frequent check-ins on these items, the versus deadlines. Because what we're gonna have to do at some point is highlight where, cuz I, I do think that this is gonna come down to a couple of things, like I think prioritization, just given resources, I think could be really important. And then um really having the opportunity for people to see where those barriers are and bring those to the commission, cuz at some point, that's gonna those resource barriers are, are gonna be staff capacity to do these things.
I, I agree, I think we need, uh as you, as I'm thinking about this, we need to look for the the leverage points where the, the capacity we have can be directed towards something to give us the greatest lift. And when we talk about climate, you know, reduction, you know, reduction in climate emissions, we're also talking about often reduction in expense. And so the, you can get the flywheel turning, maybe the, you know, you you hit the things that give you the biggest bang, biggest bang for your buck, and then you kind of get a little more push in terms of resources to go to the next thing, and the next thing, but it's about sequencing those efforts, go ahead.
Um it's softer language than I would like, but I think it might get over the concerns. Um instead of adding a due date, we could make it a goal date. Right? Because when we pass that goal, that is something that activists can point to. You agreed this was your goal and you're not doing it, so we're highlighting, we're not meeting our goals. But we're also not committing to something that has so many external factors that it's not reasonable for the planning commission to assume that the B U C C will do that, since we don't control their priorities or their docket.
And I, one thing I might add is I think this is becoming more of a work planning document than the comprehensive plan usually is, because of the implementation plan. And um the board is gonna have thoughts about that. So I think the more deliberate that, as a body, you can be about what is important. It's more likely, I mean, it's the, the old adage, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. Um and I know this is gonna be really frustrating for a lot of people, but we have limited resources. Um if the board wants to free it up and say there's, we're gonna somehow make money for all of this, it's gonna be hard. We're on B one point one, on one section of the comp plan.
Yeah, please, Barry.
How many docket items are there this year?
Oh, I don't know of that off the top of my head.
I think there's what, twelve, maybe?
And.
Question, I thought you had the answer.
No, I, I remember seeing it, but I know there's a very limited number, and they put F T E to every one of those docket items when they vote on what items to move up on the docket for actual implementation that year. And what we're talking about, just at this first one, B one one, is a docket item for an ordinance. Uh that's, that's my point, and then that's the first one out of a hundred. Uh what, to your point. How are you gonna, you said a hundred F T E, I would say that's probably correct.
Uh that was a uh W A G.
I'm just saying, the commissioners are gonna docket these things uh for ordinances or decisions, and they're gonna do it based on funding availability. And if we don't give them our top priorities to put on that thing, then they're gonna be just as lost as we are when we go through these items.
Yes.
I would say perhaps we ought to try to do as quickly as possible, move through all the material, mark where we see that kind of work, and then come back and prioritize. Because it's hard to pri, we, we have to get through the whole document before we can actually look at a universe and say, okay, we have multiple pri- priorities, how will we manage them? Because if we do it like this, it's, it doesn't make any sense.
I don't know. From seventy two and seventy three and seventy four.
Yeah, exactly. We almost have to move quickly through them. Mark, you know, mark the ones where we don't agree, or where there's real F T E commitment, and then go back and say, okay, yeah, and in retrospect, that doesn't make sense, let's a, let's adapt. I think it'd save us time in the long run.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, question, right?
I agree with that, um I was just going to add that uh I, I do think that having some sort of structure on on timing is really important for this process. Like, I I appreciate having some sort of like commitment dates for these things um in there. That's going to provide the structure that they're going to need for implementation, that, that provides that prioritization. So I I would like to, I would like to move on with uh with, or I would like, I I I promote moving on with uh uh Commissioner Kaiser's suggestion.
I I think that if we're gonna do any kind of prioritizing and then doing a resource analysis that is informed by prioritizing this whole first section of going after existing development instead of new development should probably be a lower priority. If we're looking at stuff that's already there and then trying to push energy codes on it instead of worrying about building new stuff with higher energy codes. I think this is a much bigger project, much more contentious project, and should be a lower priority.
Okay, something we should discuss when we get through that.
So let's, so do you, do you have some, I was gonna say, let's talk about some suggestions about how to do this. I think maybe getting all the way through whatever stopping point you had in mind quickly. Um and and to your point, Commissioner Kaiser, kind of saying, okay, this one feels like there's more conversation here, and this one is, we're, we're in alignment perhaps, or largely in alignment. Um and then going back for a second round and hitting those points and trying to figure out a prioritization, is that?
I I was just gonna suggest um a, as a method to do that, if we're doing thumbs up, thumbs down, temperature checks, maybe thumb to the side is too complex or needs more conversation. So those are the items that we, we aren't going to easily reach consensus on, we move on and we get through what we can with easy thumbs ups and thumbs downs.
I like focusing on where, where we can
Yeah.
agree first.
So I feel like the second one, which is just add the tracking or estimated tracking, I feel like that's just using data we already have in a lot of ways, that it's more likely to reach consensus. We can say yes to that, you guys can work on implementing that, we move to the next one, and then we do a second pass for the sidewayses.
My question would be, how are you going to do that? And that takes resources. And it takes a lot of resources, and CPED right now is so far behind just on regular uh implementation of a building permit. I mean, I've got a guy out where I live right now that's been waiting for eighteen months to get his building permit approved. I mean, I've got a guy out where I live right now that's been waiting for eighteen months to get his building permit approved. And that's not unusual from talking to the folks out here on C P E D. I talked to him just two days ago. So I'm just gonna asking the question. Who would track the estimated energy and greenhouse gas emissions reductions and savings customers? Who would track that? It would be C P E D.
Not necessarily.
Then who?
That's a good question.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking the question because then we're talking again, resources.
Yeah, if it is. Yes, Mr. Peschinger.
Chair, Chair, I feel this conversation has become dilatory. We pl- please proceed with our agenda.
Okay, I like, I think, I think we can go through one by one and, and. Look for the places where we have some consensus. Maybe highlight the places where we need more conversation. And, and then come back to those after we've seen the entire body. Of those suggestions so that maybe we, we can in our own minds kind of. Identify the things that we have as priorities. Does that? Sound like? Agreeable to everybody?
Thumbs up for that.
I'll, I'll let you drive.
Okay, so for that first suggestion of adding a due date. To the left if you want more conversation and the thumbs down if you don't wanna change at all.
I would come back to have more conversation on this one.
So it looks like, wait, I saw.
That's three, two and one. One thumbs up, three middle thumbs, two down thumbs.
You have a tracking system?
So majority is revisit.
Majority revisit. I don't think we need to track the exact vote, just what majority is.
It's not an official vote.
I would understand divergence as also revisit.
So B one point two.
You didn't check the second part.
Oh, yeah, so the, the second part was adding the. To I P C L twenty seven, track estimated energy and greenhouse gas emissions reduction and savings to customers. That was what was briefly talked about was who would do that? And how?
I, my, my viewpoint is this, this point already has so much tracking that staff are going to do. I, I, I feel like. That same staff would be doing this. We were already committing in the plan to do tracking. This is just a nuance of what we're tracking.
I thought of at least one methodology you could use already.
So, but. Majority thumbs up for adding point two on B one point one from T C A. Okay.
I don't know if Commissioner Fishburne can hear us or.
Is there a way to get, but if.
Can use gestures, I think.
Uh, Commissioner Fishburne and Commissioner Peschinger, if you just wanna call out, if you have. If I'm, if I'm not catching when you raise your hand or wanna talk. Um, just go ahead and. Interrupt us.
Will do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, B one point two. Alright, so. This one was also similar, um, the T C M P language. Is develop and adopt policies that require residential properties to undertake an energy audit at the time of sale or during substantial remodel. Local financial institutions to develop mortgage products that incorporate audited energy efficiency recommendations. Then that third column is what is currently in the draft. Um, of the comp plan and implementation plan. So that says what we've got right now. And so that's C L one dot C dot two and I P C L fourteen. Uh, the staff notes were that this is appropriate to apply at a regional scale so that it's consistent across jurisdiction. Disclosures audits can be difficult to enforce, um. So it's important to work with the group that would be applying and requiring these. T C A's notes were need to add the part about working with financial institutions. For mortgage products with energy efficiency recommendations. That's part one of T C A's notes for that. And part two is add the following to I P C L fourteen, work with financial institutions to develop mortgage products. That incorporate audited energy efficiency recommendations. So it's, T C A's suggested edits are adding their language, a part of their language to. It looks like C L one dot C dot two and I P C O.
What do we feel about these suggestions?
I, I worry that it incentivizes new building in rural county where we don't want growth. And I agree with staff that this makes more sense at a regional level than applying to rural county.
What type of thumb is that?
That's down for me, I'm sorry. I don't think it makes sense for the county.
I don't know where the, where the county has a place to, to develop financial products and the market will. Will develop those products as needed.
The good folks online person.
Full accounting of the thumbs.
Yeah, thumbs down, I see Fish, uh, Commissioner Fishburne. It's, it's a good idea, but I, I think it's something that the financial institutions will choose to do on their own.
So I will make note for no change on B one point two. Nice. Alright, now, just a reminder, if there are numbers that are skipped, it's not cuz they're actually skipped. There's just not a B one point three in this list. So we are going to be one point four. Um, the language from the T C M P is provide incentives such as property tax breaks for landlords. Who install energy conservation measures in rental housing. Uh, what Thurston County has in the comp plan right now is C L one B five. Provide local funding and seek funding opportunities to provide incentives and rebates to support weatherization, energy and water efficiency. And renewable energy investments in buildings. So, and then there are also staff considerations of equity considerations with applying tax breaks for just landlords. Um, for energy conservation and measures. And then T C A submitted their additional comments that I P C L fifty five, um. To provide incentives such as property tax breaks for landlords and other property owners. Who install energy conservation measures in rental housing. Include limits on sales price and rent increases on these properties associated with these improvements. To prevent gentrification and negative equity impacts. And they also added a timeline.
That staff comment from B one point four, I think should be in B one point five, but. Is less of a equity concern providing those kind of the tax breaks to landlords versus property.
Oh, we said property owners, not.
There's, that's one point five, it's property.
Anybody wanna make a quick comment on how they're feeling about this?
I'm not, I'm not sure what the county's role in adjusting property taxes is. I don't know. I, I think incentivizing these kind of things is fantastic. I really do like carrots more than sticks, but I'm not sure that property tax is actually the right way to do it, but developing other funding mechanisms.
Since it says such as, um, it's just giving the example of that. Would you be comfortable moving with that or would, would you want to strike that section?
I mean, it already says provide incentives.
Yeah, I think that the, the language that was provided by staff is probably. I don't like, uh, well, if we, if we just left it at that, I'd be, I'd be fine with that. With C L one B five. Um, I do have a question. Uh, the additional part that they added here that was not even in the original version, which is about, um. Limiting rent increases, does the county currently manage that at all? Does it even have?
I don't think there's a role for the county in.
I mean, I'm a fan of rent. But I don't, I don't know if there's any precedent for us doing that as a county.
I think the state just did it.
But the state did, yeah, cuz they, they, well. If you've been in there for like fifteen years, got watered down a lot.
I, I would personally give a thumbs up to leaving the C L one B five language. As is in incorporating the staff comment.
So, so we're thumbing something, the addition.
Okay, then I'm a thumbs down on the addition.
Thumbs down equals no change.
I'm, I feel like we could adapt it a little bit, so I'm, I'm sideways.
So there's one, two, three, four, five thumbs down and then. Bill, it's a thumbs up, so six thumbs down. So this is a no change.
One sideways, the rest down.
And then, yeah, so I think the five down, so no change on. Thank you. Okay, then. The one point five. The T C M P action description was create incentives such as property tax credit for property owners who participate in energy efficiency. This is also similar to the one we just did, where at C L one B five, provide local funding and seek funding opportunities to provide incentives and rebates. To support weatherization, energy and water efficiency and renewable energy investments in buildings. So this one added on past energy efficiency what the county has.
Again, I think this one, the existing language says, you know, provide incentives and rebates. Um, the, the notes in the final column, just call out property tax breaks, um, which. I, I don't know that, that the existing language precludes that as, as an incentive.
Yeah, it looks like the two substantive changes are providing the example of property taxes, not actually binding us to them. And introducing uh, rent increase caps.
And limits on sale price, which I don't know that the county has any mechanism to do that or should be involved in.
It's the same concerns as last.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably gonna come.
So thumbs down equals no change to the county language. And then we have one, two, three, four, five, six thumbs down, so that's a majority of thumbs down. Alright, so no change on the one point five. I hope this is working for everyone so far. B one point six, uh, the T C M P language is require rental units to meet baseline levels of energy. And make more stringent overtime. Um, we had three different related comp thing, please, that does not mean they're exactly the same. But the main consideration was that the county doesn't measure energy usage. Uh, C P E D accomplishes this through adopting new energy and building codes. And then T C A had a few um, suggestions of disclosures. Uh, for rentals, adding them to the H E S model ordinance. I don't know if I have what that acronym means in front of me. Uh, developed by T C M C staff, development codes only apply to new buildings, solar ready construction response to a different T C M P action. They had a question about an education campaign on rental units, so that. Believe is related to I P C L forty eight. And that's an educational campaign for building officials, partners and staff to support implementation of new energy and building codes that reduce G H D emissions. So the connection of education campaign. Is to help.
It's an, it's an education of, of the staff, it's not an education campaign overall.
No, it's an education camp- campaign that would be made by staff, so it's developed, so the county would do it. Um, for building officials, partners and staff to support implementation of the new. So it's basically making sure not only the staff, but also building officials, partners could include developers. Um, folks coming in with applications so that everyone's on the same page with implementation of new. Codes and G H D reduction practices. And Rebecca Harvey with the Climate Mitigation Office did suggest. Um, addressing this by connecting it to the H E S model ordinance. Um, so her draft language was expand. Uh, the T C M C's home energy performance disclosure policy and program. To include additional building types such as single family residential, multi-family manufactured homes and commercial structures. So this one.
We've got two, we basically, T C A's version and then the recommendation from staff.
Yeah, um, so, well.
Well, T C A posed a question and it sounds like the staff recommendation is the answer to that question.
I, I actually like what's the staff recommendation is there. I think that makes sense.
The expand. Alright, and then.
So that, that addresses that first two paragraphs, I think, in that, in their questions, and then I think that next one is probably needs its own separate.
Yeah, so maybe we focus on part one of this, the T C A notes.
So support for expanding the H E C.
So maybe that could work is the thumbs up for Rebecca Harvey, the climate mitigation per language. Thumbs down for no change.
No opinion.
Alright, no opinion, absolutely. So one, two, three, four thumbs up.
Commissioner Fishburne, how do we feel on that? Sideways. Mister Peschinger?
Thumbs up.
Gives us the majority thumbs up.
Okay, so, um, I will draft an implement to. Climate mitigation program managers' language. Alright. Okay, then the second part of T C A's notes was. An additional I P action so that this would be I, a new. Actually, the implementation plan require rental units to meet baseline level of energy usage and conservation. And make more stringent overtime. So is this a, yes, we want to adopt this, no feelings or no?
Uh, yeah, I.
Me, can I make? I just, uh. I don't mind that if it was for new construction. Because then it would fit in with our developmental codes for new construction. I, I don't like it for existing.
So would you suggest an amendment of required new rental units to meet?
I think the distinction between existing development and new development needs to be clear in all these policies. So if it's, if we're explicit to new, so let's, can we check ass written and then also check the. Where we're at on new development. Well, part of the problem I see here, B two is, is actually labeled reduce energy use in existing. So why we're talking about residential rentals, I'm not, I'm not really sure why that. We're, we're on B five dot one, uh, B one dot six.
Yeah, he's, uh, I think what Commissioner Casino is pointing to is write the next thing.
For commercial.
Same language, but. And so we'll be able to skip it essentially if we disagree on.
Yeah, I mean, my, my amendment would be to require new rental units to meet baseline.
Uh, if, if we're open to it, I'd suggest we vote on it just as written. Or check, temperature check on as written and then temperature check the, um, the amendment to get an idea where we're at. So that makes sense? So ass written?
I'd be a no.
We are majority down.
Alright, so then, what is the?
As amended, would be new development.
New development, I.
Built in the details there. We're majority thumbs up on that.
So, okay, so the language is require new development or new rental units?
Would encompass.
Retroactive building codes, just if someone's converting from their primary residence into a rental, then they would have basically retroactive energy codes. They wanted to turn their primary home into a rental, then. Then they'd have to fix it. That's a business endeavor. I feel like the, they're taking on that as part of their business expense and their planning. They just don't rent it.
And then you lose a rental.
Potentially add it to the housing supply and sell it.
I mean, I just went through that. I'm sorry.
That's why the devil's in the detail.
That, that was a fifteen thousand dollar.
Just, just so, we did check, so can we just thumbs up or thumb? Temperature check, the revised saying, um. New development, new rental, sorry, new rental unit. I'd be, I'd be fine with that. Okay, so temperature check on.
New rental unit development, yes.
I think thumbs down on conversion. So we are entirely, I think, thumbs up on that, it's a lot.
And then do you still want it to say that short term, one to five years or how?
I don't understand that.
A note, I think, from them, just on what the, they think the time scale is for doing.
Okay, so we're just gonna view that as an external thing rather than. Loudly adding it to the official record. Wasn't me. Alright, B two point one, so this is similar, it's uh, requiring. Alright, B two point one, so this is similar, it's, uh, requiring energy performance ratings for commercial structures to be disclosed. So that owner sentence, some prospective buyers are informed before making purchasing or rental decisions. The county response to that was CL one point C point two. Coordinate a regional policy for assessment and disclosure of residential and commercial building energy performance ratings. This is also one that county staff viewed this as more of a regional scale, difficult to apply and enforce.
With a bunch of different standards if, if this, each city and the UJ's and the county all come with different standards.
Yeah, and well, uh. You guys, or you all, um. Sorry, I'm, I'm from Oklahoma, so I always try to say y'all, but then I stop myself and.
All kinds of broken.
Commissioners recommended earlier. Was for the, uh, Rebecca Harvey's, um, change of expand the TCMC's home energy performance disclosure. Policy and program to include additional building types beyond single family residential, such as multifamily manufactured homes and commercial structures. So that, that you just accepted on B one point six could already take care of part of that.
I think that takes care of the CL fourteen, the first item on there.
Yeah, so.
I think that's already handled.
Yeah, we have that. Make a note, okay. So then this one is another suggested new IP. Action, require energy performance ratings for commercial structures to be disclosed. This one also could be answered. In, in my professional opinion, I could be wrong, by what we just accepted with Rebecca Harvey's language.
Yeah, it makes sense, so it's already handled.
So just for my clarification, that is appropriate to apply at a regional scale so that it is consistent across jurisdictions? Is that the language you're talking about?
The, the language we have was expand the TCMC's, so that's the.
Okay, notes that they had that we've already agreed to.
Call that was, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no, I'm just, I was looking at it and I got.
Yeah, alright, so are we, we feel, yes, that we already did that? Okay, alright, so then part, I guess I'll call it three of their notes is IPCL fourteen. And this is. Yeah, this is actually what we already have, so I'm not sure.
Duplicate of what we looked at, I think, earlier in. B one dot.
Yeah, so maybe did they change some language here or are they just saying?
Um, real quick here, so, okay, uh, collaborate with the Thurston County Climate. Uh, collaborative to develop and adopt a home energy disclosure ordinance that would implement a regional policy to require.
It's a little different.
No, it's the exact language that's already in, so that's fine.
That one, because it's already in the plan.
Exact language, good.
Alright, B two point three, the LED lighting, oh.
Oh, they left.
Yeah, we lost.
We lost the light bubbly.
Lost our in-person LED folks.
To put her through it again.
So the TCMP suggested action was, not suggested, the TCMP action was install LED lighting in public sector buildings and infrastructure. Um, what we've got in the plan as of now is prioritize increasing energy efficiency of existing buildings. Through adaptive reuse projects and weatherization, focus on preserving and retrofitting buildings to be more energy efficient. Emphasizing accessible and affordable weatherization in overburdened communities, particularly those at higher densities to reduce emissions. And increase resilience. Um, the TCAT comment was that it doesn't specifically talk about LEDs.
Yeah, right.
It's true. It's true, but.
I mean, it's implied, but like, make it explicit, just.
I'm trying to think.
Exquisite, go ahead.
So, um, the only thing I would, I would say, thinking about this, this is a document designed to be our priorities for twenty years. If we were writing this twenty years ago, we would be saying put CFLs and things, right? Because at the time, that was the most efficient technology. I feel like if we're smart, as this, as a planning document, that's going to be in effect, instead of saying what the current best technology is. We simply state the, the best commercially available technology.
Yeah.
That way it changes over time.
I mean, I think it, energy retrofit covers it.
It is.
Alright, so maybe we could do a thumbs down to keep as is, thumbs up to change anything.
I, I still think that we, we should explicitly call out the best available, uh, commercially available technology. It doesn't currently say that.
Sometimes it might be best available energy stuff, that's something that costs billions of dollars. Uh, so think about like desalinization, like that might be.
Desalinization is commercially available.
It has been. It has massive, massive scale and it has been for about twenty years. So that's, that's why.
We could have a small modular reactor.
Always say best available, because what's available may not be ever within reach of Thurston County.
And we want to give flexibility, you know, because of the point about what, what's coming. And yeah, I just think it makes sense to keep it the way it is.
I do see something that we could improve, if anyone's up for it. Um, it does, in the CL one B six, we say focus on preserving and retrofitting buildings to be more energy efficient.
But doesn't mention.
Building to an infrastructure?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Infrastructure.
Get this there.
And could we, could we include the word lighting as well?
Yeah, I think it's, it, it, I think we can, we can specify lighting and not harm anything here.
I don't think, I don't think we're hurting anything, and I think it gets us closer to meeting what is obviously a key point of contention from the community.
It is, it is some low hanging fruit.
It is.
So could we get a thumbs up for adding to existing language, uh, retrofitting buildings, infrastructure and lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Is there any way we could also, I mean, if we're gonna, we're all thumbs up, some preserving and retrofitting buildings that have something in there about the courthouse.
Yes.
That's very specific.
I think that'll have to be its own work session.
I, I feel like the courthouse asset topic is a sideways thing, keep it on.
Hope I won't mind taking a lot of stupid.
We would like not to be here till midnight, so, uh.
I think they may have.
Okay, so we think we're good on B two point three. So B two point six, uh, the TCMP language is create an incentive program for the installation of reflective roofs. On commercial buildings to reduce building energy consumption and the urban heat island effect.
Did I skip something? I feel like we, there's like seven, where's, where's eight? Six, seven, and then.
Sometimes they skip.
Yeah, sometimes.
They're not, they're not connecting every single.
Okay.
Are you on this one?
Oh.
Is it on the back of the page you were just putting?
Oh, okay, that's what, that's what happened, I'm sorry, I, I'm the one who was, it, it printed weird. It puts long edge, not short edge, and it confused the heck out of me.
So this one could also be tied to that CL one B five.
Yeah, this is one of those things where, um. With the limited resources we have, do we want people replacing roofs that still have life in them? Or do we want, when they're replacing a roof at the end of its life? We can encourage or incentivize it to be reflective.
This is exactly the same as.
That's painting your roof white, it doesn't require replacing it.
Yeah, so this, that related language is that CL one B five is a really good umbrella policy.
Yeah, and I think there are also other options, I'm not sure about the like trade offs, but what about green roofs? Those have a huge impact on.
They, they're both cooling and they're not a bunch of latex paint on you.
And also, like, what about solar panels on those roofs? I think.
You can use bifacial panels on a white roof.
What's that?
You can use bifacial panels on a white roof, so you get the reflection from the roof up on the underside of the panel.
Daniel's twenty year problem, we don't know what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, so do we want to do thumbs down for no change, thumbs up for continuing?
Did, did staff have any comment on this one?
Uh, our only comment was this is primarily an urban action for specifically.
So this is looking only really at commercial buildings.
Urban heat island effect.
Essentially, this means like for Grand Mound.
So that's really the only place it would apply?
I mean, uh, to the point about green roofs and, and things like that, those are, those are actually most effective in, uh, industrial settings. Um, uh, I mean, like, on like big factories and stuff like that, so that, that is actually in some ways, uh, applicable in this context. If I was gonna say anything about, about this in here, it would be within CL one B five. Just like highlighting roofing as, uh, as a target, in the same way that we highlighted lighting in the other one. Point six.
Building envelope?
That, that's very jargony, is someone gonna understand that?
Well, it's roofing, it's windows, it's doors, it's, it's siding, it's, it covers all of it.
Yeah, so I think there's probably the least innovation in the roofing space when I think about building envelope.
If we have windows, you're thinking insulation, that does so much more.
About insulation, we. We talked about.
HVAC systems.
HVAC systems, we, the thing that probably needs the most care and feeding is probably.
So if we added thermal or something like that, so we're not just focusing on the energy consumption, but I guess it is, ultimately it's an energy consumption thing, isn't it? Which we've already got in B.
That CL one B five does cover.
I think so.
Yes.
This might be a little too specific, honestly, I'm kinda, like, we could look at it, but I don't think we have consensus on it.
Yeah, this is one of those ones I'd keep going, because we're gonna get.
You have the thumbs on for no change?
No change for me.
One, two.
Thank, one B five. Yes.
And, uh, Commissioner Fishburne?
Black smoke.
So I think we, I think it's majority down, but we, we were close on maybe more conversation.
No change, alright.
We renamed Commissioner Passenger to be Enclave, the people Enclave up there sending smoke signals.
Don't wanna.
Oh, did I, did I, did I confuse meetings, sorry?
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Passenger, what was that?
I was wondering if he confused the meetings.
Oh, I got it. They are happening at the same time.
Alright, B two point eight, the TCMP language is set energy efficiency performance standards for commercial buildings with gross.
It, it got, it gets cut.
Yeah, do we wanna, I mean, there, one of the recommendations from TCAT is an addition of IPCL fifty nine on that top of that page.
Yeah, that was the incentive program for reflective roofs, and so that, I, I, as I understood, I could have misunderstood, but.
No, we talked about it, I just didn't.
I, I could very easily have missed it though. Alright, so B two point eight, set energy efficiency performance standards for commercial buildings with gross floor areas smaller than fifty thousand square feet. Um, and this one was.
It's the same state as hell, but.
Yeah, and it, back to our coordinating a regional policy. Um. TCAT's comments. Uh, they were talking about different tiers and wanting a local comprehensive program for this. And then, so that was number one of their comments.
So basically they're saying the state level rules only apply to really tall buildings?
No, to buildings over twenty thousand square feet.
Oh, okay, so large buildings, they don't apply to small buildings. So we could, we could fill the gap at a county level.
I, I can tell you that, you know, the first, the first. Was buildings over ninety thousand square feet, and then it drops down and drops down with, at different deadlines. And currently. There, there's not enough resources in the state to cover the first. And they're pushing out the deadlines, you know, school districts just can't, like, school districts are one of the ones that have these big buildings. And they just, there's no, you know, it's, you'll hear them say it's an unfounded mandate, they, they just can't, they can't comply.
It's most impactful in the largest buildings.
Right, so rather than taking those regulations down to the smallest commercial buildings in Thurston County. Like, I think the effort should be on getting the, the state, getting the resources to implement the laws the state has passed.
So what I'm hearing.
Is my opinion.
Theoretically, practically, it's not really implemented.
I don't think that we get to buildings under twenty thousand square feet inside a twenty year timeframe.
If it can't be implemented, then. And I still feel like we could explore it more, but it doesn't seem like we're gonna reach an agreement on it.
There's, yeah, there won't be any agreement here, but.
So, Bill, so you're down, so where are you at, Barry?
You were discussed?
Yeah.
You middle thumb?
Yeah, Bill, Bill, Joel, myself, and where are you at Commissioner Passenger, because we're tied for four?
I'm middle thumb.
Okay, so majority is further discussion.
We, yeah, I'm fine to talk about this again, but, um, yeah, let's, let's move along.
So what you missed, B two dash eight, we were majority barely middle thumb, so more discussion.
Revisit, okay. For both.
It's, it's the same thing.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna plug in my computer real quick.
Yeah, I wanna do a time check with everybody. Um, are we, are we willing to do another fifteen minutes of this and then get through our agenda? Is that?
I, I'd like to get, see if we get to nineteen.
At eight, okay, we're gonna crank away as much as we can till eight thirty, then we'll move on the agenda.
Do we have anything on the phone?
No, not really, it's just staff update.
We can go really fast.
Yeah, that gets us out here at eight thirty-five probably.
I did, yeah.
Okay, where did we land, we're at B three dash one or dot one?
B three point one, so number ten. Provide educational resources and technical assistance to industry professionals, building owners and managers on all aspects of energy efficient building design. Retrofits and. Operations for new and existing buildings. Um, so this, uh, is kind of a larger one. The county has three different connected or, um, relevant policies right there. Um, providing local funding and seek funding to provide incentives and rebates, um, increasing energy efficiency through adaptive reuse. Um, trying to make things more energy efficient, uh, accessible and affordable, supporting state building code. But we don't specifically have any information about providing educational resources. Um, on all aspects of energy efficient building design.
Curious, providing doesn't mean that we're making it, it just means that we're linking it, linking it?
Well, but then that, but we would have to do it on every single aspect of energy efficient building design.
Like that might be, I don't think the county should take the lead on.
No, and the, the, these educational resources, they're out there. The, the building is, I mean, there's conferences, I could go to one every single day of the week on, on this kind of stuff, so, you know. This is gonna be where businesses choose their lane and try and outcompete their competition.
I wonder if, if maybe instead of pro- provide, we could take a sort of secondary role by making it support? Like, we're support providing?
In CL one C one, there is that second sentence says, help educate and support building officials, partners and staff. To implement energy and building codes that reduce energy use, embodied carbon and materials and phase out.
I like the current language.
I do too.
Okay, so thumbs down for keeping current language?
Um, I guess.
I'd keep the current language.
I, I, the C, CL one dot C dot one doesn't mention industry. That's the main difference there, I think.
I think that would be under partners.
Could we call out industry specifically?
So building officials, partners, industries and staff?
Yes.
That largely gets to what they're.
I think it achieves what they want without putting us in the driver's seat, and I feel like that's easy.
I'm totally fine with that.
Do we wanna use industry professionals as the language?
I think that makes sense.
That's fine.
Okay, do we wanna do thumbs up?
I think it gets us closer to what they want in a way. Clearly burden us.
Give anybody heartburn, does it?
So majority thumbs up.
Okay, thanks.
Hold on a second, there is one distinction.
Okay. B three point four, partner with public, private, nonprofit and faith based organizations to facilitate rapid deployment. And public awareness of high profile demonstration buildings that use innovative energy efficiency and or technology to limit energy use.
Sort of like show houses, basically.
Yeah, and so this, we really didn't have much structural support in the plan for. We have a similar of, uh, providing incentives and partnering to support energy efficiency programs. But not necessarily show buildings.
Yeah, EDCs are, uh, master builders are already doing this.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, that would be then the partner. I mean, in this context, it's like what they're asking for is basically like to farm out that work to someone else. Um, but.
So the existing language covers it.
Is.
Uh, maybe we could add something about highlighting?
Yeah.
Um, I feel like that, that gets to. Um, I feel like that that gets to what they want without necessarily adding a new action item.
I think highlighting gets a little tricky if it's, um, I mean.
Maybe we could provide it as an example in this, as something we could do.
So we could use the word example and I think get there, so if you said. Uh, you partner with developers, businesses, local energy providers to provide incentives and examples that support.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, then, just, if we're just giving it as an option essentially, but we're, we're.
That's fine.
I'm, I'm high with that.
So, time check on.
Do one examples or demonstrations?
Examples.
I think examples is better.
So.
That way it doesn't have to be something that physically exists if there's a good virtual.
Yeah, so that was some.
Building, I was just to show it off, it's a little.
The additional IP.
I have a question in general about this stuff.
Yes, Commissioner Pesinger, go ahead, please.
So, uh, a couple of things, one, I know we don't have a ton of buildings in the county. Um, but still, you know, coming up with countywide policy here is, I support. Um, and number two, I have a friend who's worked for three or four more years at JBLM. Responsible for energy efficiency for the entire base, and they have thousands of buildings on that base. That he's responsible for, and it usually comes down to a bunch of different things, not just light bulbs, not just roofs. It also often very often comes down to windows and window and draftiness and how much, you know, tightness there is of air going inside, outside. On a hot day, you wanna keep it cool inside, on a cold day, you wanna keep it warm inside, that's where a lot of efficiency is to be found. Um, and then I would also reference that, like, you know, there's ideas out there, like the LEED certification for buildings. And I think that's probably in a similar category to organic, in that it costs a lot of money and it doesn't exactly provide perfect benefits. Um, but there's, I know a lot of farmers here locally who say that they do organic type of farming. Or similar farming without actually getting the organic certification, is there anything we could do to? Learn the best practices of LEED certification and what could be applied, uh, I think as Commissioner Casino and Chair. Um, Hanson have described like the most cost efficient ways to get the most bang for our buck and encourage those.
I like this is a more discussion topic.
It's, I feel it's worth discussion, but it it's, it it'll pull us off of making progress.
I'd like to come back to this.
To three point four, just the point.
To his point, which is basically a new, uh, planning commission initiated additional item.
Okay, so that would be a great addition, uh, Commissioner Pesinger, if we could bring it to the session we do on the climate plan. Um, or the climate element right now on the crosswalk. Okay, so.
Just make sure that's in the minutes as an, as an action item.
Yeah, so hopefully, Tasha can parse that out. Um, three point five is develop data methodology to monitor use and impacts of green building incentives. To inform future incentives and develop recommendations for policy or programs. So this one is pretty similar with IP CL twenty seven, provide local funding and seek funding opportunities to provide incentives and rebates. To support weatherization, energy and water efficiency and renewable energy investments in buildings. We have track number of external funding dollars received, prioritize these programs for cross-burdened communities and ensure outreach is targeted towards and benefits overburdened. Populations and staff suggestions, we're adding potential a- additional bullet points to that of track use and impacts of the incentives. Develop recommendation changes, um, but then what TCAT sent in.
They they take that, that's their, their second bullet. But they add the, they add the one that says that track total annual funding.
So, yeah, the what they were suggesting is track annual funding, track use and impacts of incentives. So that already works well with what staff recommendation was, so thumbs up for adding that language, thumbs down for leaving as is. You see one thumbs down, one, two thumbs up.
Where, yeah, Bill's thumbs up, that's five thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay. B four. This is require that new local government facilities demonstrate green building technologies and practices. So the related comprehensive plan policies are CL one D two, one D five and one D three. Don't ask me why those aren't in order. Install solar vol- photovoltaics on all available and feasible county properties, including building rooftops and available ground areas. Amend local development code to require solar ready construction as appropriate. Facilitate the development of community-owned renewable energy generation projects and prioritize placement in historically underserved communities. So then, not all of them are directly what T C M P suggested. Um, so TCAT suggested, um, a new. Um, IP action to require new local government facilities demonstrate green building technologies and practices. So exactly what was in the T C M P.
I'm not sure what demonstrate means in this capacity, honestly.
Then we also have a suggestion from Rebecca Harvey, um, that she says, instead of adding a new action. She suggests modifying IP CL thirteen. Um, implement a climate adaptation and GHD emission approval standard for developments. Require that new and substantially remodeled county facilities comply with the standard. Utilize existing frameworks such as LEED, Living Communities, Just Communities, Envision, S I T E S. And Salmon Safe to inform the development of the standard, which may include, so.
This is Commissioner Pesinger's suggestion.
This is, yeah, this is much better. Honestly, I think, I think staff suggestion is better.
Thumbs up.
Well written, I I like it.
We have four thumbs up so far for the five, six.
Ticks if you count Pesinger and.
That's a strong majority to add Rebecca Harvey or climate. She will be delighted.
You can tell we erupted in applause. Probably staff don't often get.
Don't make her watch this.
The PCSR RW week, so clearly we need to do a little appreciation.
I think it's supposed to be county spirit week right now for our staff, so we'll try to tell her.
Oh.
Okay, fourteen.
I was looking at the, I was looking at the photo of everybody wore their favorite band shirt, I couldn't tell. Time Manzer's favorite, was it a PJ Harvey shirt?
I think it was.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
We can follow up with that on good as yours.
Offer streamline permitting, lower fees or other incentives for projects that meet green building certification standards. We're back to that IP CL twenty seven of provide local funding where just recently, we suggested adding some more language to it. Um. Is that, oh, yeah, hold on, there's so many notes on this one. So this one, TCAT wanted us to add language that says, and meeting green building certification standards to IP CL twenty seven. Um. Rebecca Harvey's note is that she doesn't think we need to add that.
It feels redundant.
So up for making changes, down for leaving as is. That is. At least a majority down in office.
I I think we're entirely down on that one.
Okay, so no change.
It just makes it wordy and we've already basically explained it.
Are trying to make this a somewhat more accessible document.
Yeah, and honestly, what we have is better than green.
Yeah, green is vague.
Yeah.
Greenwashing happens, yeah, um, so B four point six. Back to the record, create a local property tax reduction or credit for new buildings that meet an energy efficiency performance standard. This one is that IP, so an IP CL thirteen isn't listed right here. Um, I don't wonder if we have that, but this, um, Rebecca Harvey was saying that she did not think a new action was needed. That this was covered under the standard established in IP CL thirteen. Um.
Yep.
Yeah, which is the one that you just mentioned in her previous comment. Yeah.
And with her, her new suggestion, I think we're, we're good, we don't need that.
Okay, so down for no change?
Yeah, no, I think she gets at it.
She she, she achieved it better.
Alright, I am excited to send her a very nice email.
Sixteen, I just wanna keep going.
So, B four point.
B, you guys, just do one letter each meeting.
Saying no to the addition of IP CL sixty four.
Rebecca already included for thirteen or better.
In thirteen, yeah, I think.
Alright, so four point seven, B four point seven or number sixteen, provide land use incentives such as floor area ratio, density bonus. Height bonus or parking reductions for zero net carbon buildings or other applications that dramatically increase. Energy efficiency, so this is that CL one B five, that big umbrella policy again. Provide local funding and seek funding opportunities to provide incentives and rebates to support weatherization, energy and water efficiency and renewable energy of. Investments in buildings. So it is already kinda covered by CL one B five and IP.
It's the land use that's not addressed, in my opinion.
Okay.
If we can include something about land use in the existing one instead of a whole new item, I think we achieve what they want.
Yeah, so we could change CL one B five to say. Uh, renewable energy investments in buildings and land use.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think, I think we get to what they want without having to introduce a whole new item.
And I think when in IP thirteen, whatever, uh, Rebecca mentions living buildings. And and that's where these incentives they're talking about are coming from.
Yeah, the, was it living communities?
The, um, living future challenge, or that living, whatever, that's where these bonuses. Are are embodied.
So you.
That I've seen.
With IP CL thirteen and CL one B five with and land use added.
I think we achieve it.
I think it gets there.
Okay, so this one's a hard one to.
So as amended, as we discussed, which is, is, cuz we've already approved the thirteens, we're really only adding land use is what we're checking in on.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So add and land use, yes or no, or thumbs up?
We're all thumbs up.
Uh, okay.
Unanimous.
Are we still going?
Yeah.
Okay, B four point.
We're in the groove, we just wanted to.
Four more, and if if you'll stick with us.
Three more, okay, so hire or contract with dedicated green building specialists to provide technical assistance to the permitting and development process. Um, this is related to the IP CL forty eight, which is develop an education campaign for building officials, partners and staff. To support the implementation of new energy and building codes that reduce GHD emissions. So that's basically supporting training for staff and others to implement this instead of contracting out.
Yeah, they wanna add a whole new item, don't they?
The commission is, is kinda digging into the permitting process, like, it's an ongoing project, right? And that's what this is getting at, is. Isn't it, isn't it saying technical assistance through permitting and development?
This would be, I think the idea here is that you'd hire a consultant, that consultant would show up at like a pre-app, like pre-submission.
Oh my goodness.
And.
Would be quite expensive.
It would definitely add to permit fees.
Did their consultant write this? It, um, I wonder.
Yes.
Wouldn't, I I would imagine that permitting staff is already getting trained on this stuff fairly regularly, so when they're at the permit counter, they already have. A good grasp on a lot of this material.
That'd be a. Way to do it.
Did Rebecca have comments on this one?
For this one, she did not.
I I wonder.
But I.
So this is a, this is an issue that comes up all the time with all sorts of different things that people want to, like. Incentivize different behavior in development is like have somebody at the permit counter that shows somebody a different way to do development. It's, it's a pretty well-recognized strategy. Um, I don't know if I've ever, the best I've ever seen it implemented, and like our team used to try and fund people to do that, was like. Fancy pamphlets at the counter. As far as it ever really got, sometimes you could divert somebody and like, we did pay for like. Millions of dollars worth of like technical assistance for people to talk to geotags engineers.
I feel like you're, you're better served by educating and training the staff on this. Because then they can, they can integrate it holistically when those, those technicians are not in the room.
So, um, my suggestion would be an alternate, which would be to ju- simply state that we'll develop internal. Um, knowledge and expertise on these topics, it doesn't require us to contract with someone, it doesn't require us to hire someone, it just says that. We as a county want to build the knowledge of this thing with our staff internally. I feel like that's an easy way and then you just sort of build it into natural learning development.
So what about taking IP CL forty eight, let's say, develop an education and training?
Yes. And, uh, yeah, okay, yeah, officials, partners and staff, that makes sense.
So thumbs up for that language plus the addition of and training.
We're just adding in training.
Would it be specific to the permitting and development process or?
So this is for energy and building codes that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think adding in training gets us closer.
It would get to the, that.
Right, uh, B four point one one.
I didn't see what they.
They were, they were up, we were all up on that one.
Alright, so we're. Yeah, B B four eleven, um, bingo, uh, sorry, no. Alright, require smart appliances in new construction, especially water heaters that control timing of demand. So that's, I know that require language, that's that T C M P, so what we have. In the environment recreation and open space chapter is encourage the use of no and low water use appliances and fixtures. Particularly in conjunction with septic systems to reduce the potential for groundwater contamination.
Feel like Rebecca might have some good comments on this.
What, what I'm thinking of this T C M P action is.
They're talking energy consumption, not water consumption.
Are doing this. The utilities are incentivizing this.
Yeah, with the rebate programs, especially through P S E.
And they're offering big incentives for, um, folks to install like batteries and for them to be able to reach into your home. And to to turn your thermostat up and down and like this stuff is coming fast, it's gonna be here any day.
Filled out their survey about it today, yeah.
Have you said that there was a comment from Rebecca on this?
There is, so what she put in, if I'm on the right thing. Is we may want to add an action to research the state energy code and identify opportunities to implement. Stretch codes to achieve further energy efficiency and greenhouse reduction, for this, she said, needs wordsmithing.
That's very.
That one. That, I, we have had large public comment. Against studying.
Well, against studying when it's, I I feel, it's not just against studying, it's when it's an. An urgent need with a clearly identified thing using the term study, but we push back on that too because study opens funding.
I think we can, so the, the thing that we have in here is specific to water use, not to heater, not, not, not to energy consumption. What they're talking about is an energy consumption line.
Yeah, what they're talking about is the heating of water.
Yeah, so if we, i- if we went from to reduce the potential for groundwater contamination, like if we went from just talking about water use to energy consumption. Um, that would, like, if we can include that, it's just not, not, uh, not specified in there yet.
We could do something like.
I think, I think we already have, so the E R O S two at one, which is focusing on water use, says encourage. I think that ours should, the new one for power usage should just be basically the same thing, encourage but power. Efficient appliances, I don't think, cuz honestly, all we're doing is saying is PSA is doing a good job on, well. P C is doing it at least, so we're encouraging you to do that.
So, thumbs up for a new climate, uh, element policy that says encourage. The use of smart appliances in new construction, especially water heaters.
I think that that makes sense, basically.
Okay, so.
Disagree with that, just because I wanna give people the option of a less expensive, less complicated thing that yet uses less water. I think we shouldn't be insisting that everyone have these super complicated systems that fail when the internet's down.
I can think of a lot of systems that you could be using here that would not be smart.
Yeah, that, that would accomplish the.
Yes, we want the goal, not the technology.
Encourage the use of energy efficient appliances.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah, energy efficient, you're right, smart is overly prescriptive.
I'm a Luddite and I dislike smart.
Smug.
Do we still wanna, uh, basically follow instead of.
Follow the two.
Follow the TCMP, just instead of require smart appliances, say encourage the use of energy efficient appliances.
Including, yeah, including water heaters that control timing and demand.
Do you want including or especially water heaters? They say especially.
Um, I think including, I, I don't.
Because water heaters may not be the most.
It's actually heating, heating, not water heating, that's the biggest thing there.
Yeah.
So.
Like, if people had smart thermostats, like, never could just let baseboards run.
All right, so. We're adding that.
So could we check that, since we proposed that we didn't actually?
Yeah, so up for adding a new climate policy. Encourage the use of energy efficient appliances in new construction, including water heaters that control timing of demand. And that is.
All thumbs up.
Yeah, a clear majority, okay, thank you. Last one, all right, B four, well.
It is the four twelve.
Yes, it is the four twelve. Uh, require sub metering for new multifamily buildings, so residents can track energy use. And this one, you'll see, we have nothing, we, we don't have this in the plan currently, um.
Is the implication here that people are building apartments and then splitting the bill evenly? That they're not metering each apartment? It's either included or it's, it's individually metered.
I can say that that is true.
Yeah.
In urban areas, but I mean, in the county, are they even new apartments being built?
Yeah, how many multifamily are rebuilding and wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't they?
It's just apartments, um, and. Yeah, so this, this county staff, we pointed back to PSE. They have an advanced metering infrastructure, that's where they implement that, um, not, I mean, the county doesn't supply power.
I don't see where the county has a role in.
Yeah, no, I don't think we can. There's enough, there's enough regulation on, on that.
Okay, so.
I feel like we could discuss it more honestly, but I, I don't think, I think we'd be overstepping requiring that, it's a private utility.
All right, so then the thumbs down for leaving the county kind of out, out of it. That is, wait, could you keep the?
Oh, and.
I was like. Commissioners Fishburne and Pesenger, what were your votes?
Spaced out for a minute there, sir.
Uh, that is, um.
Requires submarating, submetering for new multifamily buildings so residents can track energy use.
I think our, our thoughts were we leave this to the utility.
Yeah.
And.
So thumbs down was leave it how the county currently has, which is not much, um, and leave it up to.
I think it needs more discussion, but that's just.
I think this would be more of an issue in, uh, in the cities where you have buildings.
Grand Mound Subarea Plan could be like.
But I think this is probably like big residential buildings that get broken up into multiple units. Probably the largest instance of this being an issue. Having lived in a college town.
So do you have, do you have strong feelings on this Commissioner Pesenger or Commissioner Fishburne? They don't.
I just said sideways.
So, okay, so majority down, second was sideways.
Hey, thank you for sticking it out. I know it's, uh, fourteen, fifteen minutes past what I promised there. But we will go to staff update by same day.
All right, so we are doing musical staff, folks, um, we did hire the two positions that we had open. One of those was from, was an internal hire, um, so that's going to mean a new position, I believe it's already posted. For. Seped South on the building development side. Um, the other update, I just wanted to provide another update on one of the action items that we had last time, which was. We did get an action item from you all for the future wise crosswalk, which we're going to be providing. So we did hear it a couple of times and, um, I just want to clarify, the way that we've actually, the current recommendations for the. Uh, rural resource industrial would not allow warehouses that aren't related to a natural resource industry. So if we think about, um, warehousing for like farming operation. Like I did a flyover of Skagit County via Google the other day to look for where those, like, I used to drive through all the time. And I know where some of these warehouses are for the, their berries or for bowls. So some of those are as large as like ninety thousand square feet by my Google Maps measurement. But, um, the, the idea that we'd be allowing big warehouses in the county, um. That's not what we currently have. If we did, it would have to be a warehouse possibly size limited and related to resource industries.
Uh, this is partially related, um, the memorandum we received is part of our packet. Um, I, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, note that the way it's worded is contrary to how the. Commish, the planning commission approached the topic of restricting what could be done. We were pretty clear that we, we only listed allowed cases, we didn't give some examples of allowed cases. This is worded very much in a, here's some examples of what's allowed. It, it goes contrary to how we approached this and agreed as a planning commission. Um.
We had hard votes on that.
Hard votes over multiple meetings, and so I, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that this memorandum doesn't keep with that. It goes very much in a, hey, here's some, some permitted forms, it's very vague and I feel like it can confuse the public. And the comments we heard, I feel like. We're basically wondering where that was.
That was specific limitations too.
Yeah, we, we specifically said we only allow these.
Yeah, that's why.
That's how we approached this and there was pushback and we had hard votes, but we got this and this is not that.
No. Right. I don't have anything else, unless you have questions?
Well, I just, I was in looking at that, uh, table of, uh, like different counties and they're like minimum, maximum lot size. And types of permitted use, I liked Skagit Counties, uh, building size. Uh, and actually I, also the way they worded types of permitted use, I thought they did a good job on that.
I like the greenhouse cutout.
Yeah, I like the greenhouse cutout too.
Yeah, I feel like they have the most, the closest to what we would want.
What, what I'm referring to here specifically is that they say that, uh, the maximum building size is fifteen percent of the total lot area. If adjacent to a UGA, ten percent if it's not, and seventy percent if it's used for a greenhouse. So you can do up to seventy percent of a, uh, lot, uh, covered if it's for greenhouses, otherwise it's, uh, ten to fifteen percent.
Their setbacks are also a lot less complicated.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that is single buildings, that's specific to that warehouse concern.
All right. That's it for me then.
Okay, calendar with agenda items. Um.
These dates seem off to me.
Yeah, May seventeenth is, uh.
Saturday.
Saturday with a lot, lot, lot of things happening.
Abundantly.
Does that mean the twenty first?
Yeah, right, it could be eight different things at the same time on that day, if they were to say to me.
It's the twenty first, right?
Twenty first, okay.
Yeah, it should be the twenty first.
And the, and the fourth.
Okay, how are we feeling about availability on the twenty first? I will be in Wenatchee.
Arizona.
I might be back in time.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I'll be here. Sounds like post off form. Worst case scenario, I get to che- test out the big chair.
Yep, you might, you might get to hold this thing. Um, okay, uh, June sixth.
I will not be here.
June sixth.
That's, that's June fourth, yeah.
Oh, June fourth I'll be here.
Um, I will not be here.
I will be here.
I will be driving to the airport.
So, is that? We're good, okay, um, anything can go to the order.
Sounds like we might have a tenth planning commissioner by our next meeting. Oh, do they progress on our youngest commissioner idea?
No, I think I. If the board takes action, um, uh. Ashley, who, or Alex, uh, Tassani who applied was not forwarded.
Say that again, please.
Was not forwarded?
Were considered.
Can I do some lobbying?
You can do whatever you'd like.
Okay.
I really liked her energy and expertise and I think it would be useful when we're doing planning, that someone who's actually going to be.
Living here at that point.
Yeah.
Magic, future planning.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Oh, um, if we're good to the order, just happy public service recognition with you guys, you do a hard job and we appreciate you.
Gosh, yeah.
Hey, and if we, if we keep to like nineteen a meeting, four meetings, we'll be through all of them. Well, and then we can tackle the, the thirty one they also want to add, so. Yeah. It's getting faster as we go along because we've already addressed some of these things, so it will get easier.
All right.
Johnny pops for all staff.
Having no further business this meeting, Mr..
Wait, when did you get a gavel?
I don't know.
It just showed up.
Appeared, yeah.
Uh, we got close, we had a number of people who kept interrupting, like, not public comment time.
Let us circle the grave for a while and then we.
Try to forget one.
They, they knew, they knew that that was hot.
It's the part about the light bulbs too.
I don't know.
So I, I was looking into that too, that the paying for itself is in comparison to, uh, incandescence or high pressure. It depends on what we've got. It's, it's LED, from the worst case to LEDs, it doesn't, that doesn't, it's only energy saving, it doesn't count. The carbon of shipping production.